Well, good evening. It is March 25th, 2024, and it is approximately 6:02 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting for the City of Burbank Planning Board. Before we begin tonight, there will be one general period of public comment during the oral communications. Persons speaking during general public comment period may provide the planning board with oral communication on any matter concerning city business. The public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public hearing, public comment periods. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present the completed speaker card to the planning staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. We will start this evening. If you'll please rise with an invocation, and I will lead us in our flag salute.
Good evening. In this week, leading up to Easter, I just want to say that let's all give thanks, make wise decisions, and have a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we get the roll?
Chair Rosati.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Wick.
Present.
Commissioner Monaco.
Here.
And Commissioner Makatumian is absent.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements from our city staff?
We do not.
Are there any? Okay, so there are two hearings on tonight's agenda. Item number one, now is the time and place for the public hearing for project number 230005187, a request for a conditional use permit to allow a pet shop with grooming services in a rental tenant space located at 325 North First Street. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including oral or written, with anyone about this project?
No.
No.
Nope. And I'll just disclose that I was snooping around the building just to kind of look at the lay of the land, and somebody, I don't know who it was, maybe a building manager, was asking me what I was doing and why I was there, and so I just told them the reason why I was there, and we got into a conversation, but nothing specific. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
And are there any written communications on this matter?
We did not receive any written communications.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. May I have the presentation, please? Thank you. Good evening, Chair Rosati and members of the Commission. My name is Fatima Benitez, Associate Planner with the Community Developments Department, Planning Division. For your consideration, tonight is project number 230005187, a conditional use permit request to allow a pet shop with grooming service at 325 North First Street. The project representative is John Cambianica, on behalf of the business owner, Chuck Rubin. The CUP request is to allow a pet shop with grooming services. Per the regulations of the Plan Development 2014-01, the project site is required to comply with the standards of the BCC-2 Burbank Center Commercial Limited Business Zone, which requires planning commission approval of a CUP to permit a pet shop with grooming services at the project site pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-502. Additionally, the applicant is proposing minor interior alterations to include two restrooms, three bathtubs for the grooming service area, and a retail area. No exterior improvements are being proposed. The project site is located at 325 North First Street, on the corner of First Street and Palm Avenue, as highlighted in yellow on the aerial photograph. The project site is located within the Plan Development Number 2014-01 Zone and the Downtown Commercial General Plan Land Use Area. The site is surrounded by mixed-use residential and commercial uses to the north and east, commercial and professional uses to the west, and a train station to the south. Shown here is the site plan of the project site. The project site, located at 325 North First Street, is commonly known as First Street Village, which was approved by council on June 13th, 2017. Currently, the site is improved with Building A outlined in red. The site plan shown on the right shows all three phases of the First Street Village project. Building C is currently under construction on an adjacent site at 375 North First Street, and Building B is in plan check. Shown here are two photos of the front entrance of the existing building along First Street and the parking garage entrance located along Palm Avenue. As noted in the staff report and depicted on the site plan, the project site contains 30 retail parking spaces, inclusive of 1 ADA compliant parking space that is located on the ground floor. The applicant is not proposing any modifications that would trigger additional parking requirements per the Burbank Municipal Code. Thus, no additional parking is required. The proposed business will operate from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. The grooming service will be a permanent base, but walk-ins will be allowed and accommodated based on availability. The grooming service will be provided by employees, and no self-grooming stations are proposed. Owners will be allowed to drop off their pets and pick them up once they are ready. If the grooming service area is fully occupied, then pets will be placed in a separate waiting area with a maximum waiting time of one hour. It is anticipated that there will be three employees onsite at a given time, one inside of the retail and two employees in the grooming service area. The proposed business does not include options for overnight stay. No changes are proposed to the existing square footage and exterior facade of the building. This slide provides an overview of the existing and proposed floor plan. The entrance of the proposed project is fronting First Street and is indicted by the blue arrows. The proposed floor plan shows a project layout which includes the waiting area, reception area, and grooming service area, and a retail area. To approve a CUP, the planning commission must determine that the proposed project satisfies certain findings as specified in the Burbank Municipal Code. It's consistent with the Burbank 2035 General Plan and the downtown commercial land use designation, as outlined in the staff report. The project is located within an existing mixy building that includes residential and commercial uses. The project request for a pet shop with grooming service will contribute to the growing businesses within the downtown commercial land use area, which serves the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed project is independently locally owned business that will contribute to the diversity of uses serving the downtown neighborhood and support the economic growth within the downtown commercial land use area. Further, staff did not receive any public concerns for the proposed request. The project qualifies for a categorical exemption under Section 15301 relating to existing facilities. There are no unusual circumstances that would preclude the use of the exemption. Upon consideration of the previously stated information, the proposed project is consistent with the findings required for the conditional use permit. The proposed use is compatible with the existing neighborhood character and to the surrounding commercial uses, which are made up of restaurant and various retail uses. And a condition of approval to prohibit late-night operations and overnight boarding to limit impact from noise on the nearby residential uses ensures the use is compatible with other uses within the neighborhood. All other conditions included in the resolution are standard conditions of approval. Staff recommends that the commission find the project is exempt from CEQA, is consistent with the general plan, and satisfies the required findings for a CUP. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission approving project number 230005187, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. I will now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's John Cambianica. I'm the architect representing the owner for the conditional use permit. There isn't too much to say about it. It's a tenant permit. It seems very consistent with the city's general plan in that now that Building A is 100% leased in terms of residential, we've noticed that a lot of those apartment renters have pets, and so it seems like a very good thing for the city center and with all the proposed housing that is happening in the center of Burbank. That's all I have to say. Are there any questions?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll be right back to you, though. We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. If you wish to speak by telephone, you can call in at 818-238-3335 to address the planning board. Callers may be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we get the first few callers through. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer and take the phone off speaker when you deliver your comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards or anybody on the phone?
We have no speakers or callers.
Okay, why don't we give it just one minute before we move on?
None.
Okay. There being no further public comment, I dare declare the public period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
No further comments, thank you.
And the applicant, do you wish to make any further comments? That's a no from the applicant in the audience. Does the planning board have any questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Monaco?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the only concern would be what kind of you... Is the barking going to be bothering anybody?
There's a 13-inch concrete slab that separates the tenant from the residential uses above.
That answered the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wick, you're good?
I have one question, just one verification and one question. Will there be a plan in place to mitigate any waste from animals on any public right-ofways?
I would... That plan, I would believe, is... I saw mention of it in the conditions of approval, but...
I saw signs, yeah.
In addition to the animals that are being brought there by their owners, I believe the staff would pick up any waste that would happen to occur outside the building.
Got it.
There's also a building management cleanup crew as well.
Great. And then, as far as retail's concerned, it's dog, cat merchandise, not pets. That's not allowed in Burbank, to my recollection. Okay, got it.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Question for staff. Believe it or not, this was like one of the very first projects that I was a part of approving. I remember, it's fuzzy, but is there a park or was there a park, and maybe the park was only supposed to be there until Phase Three? Is that part of this project anymore?
Chair, if I may, I'll field this question. I am working closely with the applicant. My name is Greg Mirzavakin. I'm a senior planner for the Community Development Department.
Sure.
So, the park will be on public land. It will be a part of what is now a right-ofway, and that will be constructed and completed by the time that the second phase of construction wraps up. So, sometime in early to mid 2025 is when the park is expected to be completed.
I don't recall. I somewhat recall it was going to be near the bridge, it was going to be near this location of this pet salon?
Not exactly. So, the pet store is within Phase One of the project, Building A, which is kind of the middle parcel.
Right.
If you'll... So, the park will be on the other side of, the further side, basically, from Palm.
Okay.
So, it will be right adjacent to Magnolia. So, the right-ofway, which is between the face of the building of Phase Two...
Yeah.
And the face of the bridge.
Okay.
So, that's where the park is going to go.
I only ask because that's probably where people will go to relieve their pets when they're probably stopping before they go into the salon, so... Okay.
Chair, if I may, the larger plan development also has a provision as part of their development agreement that they will maintain all the adjacent right-ofway in perpetuity for the life of the project. So, whether there's cleanup necessary adjacent to the facility or in the immediate public right-ofway, including the park, the developer and the future ownership of the properties are responsible for the maintenance of the adjacent area.
Cool. Thank you, that helps. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, I declare the hearing closed. What is the board's pleasure? Ms. Wick?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, let's jump to it.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve project number 23-0005187, a request for a conditional use permit to allow a pet shop with grooming services at 325 North First Street.
We have one motion?
Second.
We have a second? Let's deliberate. I'm just going to say, I think it's great. I've been saying from this seat for a long time, if we truly want to be a walkable downtown community, we have to have stuff for people to walk to, like a supermarket, and a pet store, and a pet salon, and whatnot. So, as we increase our residents and our neighborhoods downtown, these are the types of amenities that we certainly need. So, I'm happy that this project is going to happen, and you have my support.
Ditto.
Chair, before the vote, just to clarify, so, and Vice Chair Wick's reading of the resolution, that would be as noted, in addition to based on the findings of fact and subject to the attached conditions of approval?
That is correct.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wick?
Yes.
And Commissioner Monaco?
Yes.
Great, congratulations. We're going to move on to item number two. Now is the time and place for the public hearing on project number 22-0007085, a request for a conditional use permit to allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits in the off-site of consumption for incidental sampling for retail establishment at 140 South Glen Oaks Boulevard. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communication, written, oral with anybody or any person regarding this project?
No.
No.
Nope. And Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Any written communications?
We did not receive any written communications on this item.
And will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Hello, good evening. May I have the presentation up on the screen, please? Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Rosati, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Joseph Pangolinan, Associate Planner with the City of Burbank's Community Development Department. The request before you is an application requesting approval of a conditional use permit for the property at 140 South Glen Oaks Boulevard, the project site for the proposed retail liquor establishment, Guinea. The applicant is requesting a planning commission approval of a conditional use to allow alcohol sales for off-site consumption only, and incidental onsite product sampling of beer, wine, and distilled spirits in conjunction with the proposed retail liquor establishment. Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1116 requires retail liquor establishments to sell alcohol for off-site consumption to obtain planning commission approval for a CUP regardless of its adjacency to residentially zoned lots. Planning commission approval of the conditional use permit would give the applicant the opportunity of applying for alcohol licenses with the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, also known as ABC. ABC is a state agency charged with the regulation of alcoholic beverages. With the approval of the CUP request, the applicant would be able... allowed to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption, subject to ABC's approval of a Type 21 alcohol license. CUP approval would also allow the applicant to seek ABC approval to offer... Sorry. CUP approval would also allow the applicant to seek ABC approval to offer product samples onsite of beer, wine, and distilled spirits through a Type 86 ABC license. However, alcohol sales would be limited for off-site consumption only, and no product samples are allowed to leave the designated serving area as noted on the plans and premises. The project site is located along the north side of South Glen Oaks Boulevard between East Olive Avenue and East Angelino Avenue. The project site is currently improved with one commercial building of approximately 3,077 square feet of rentable retail space. Guinea would only be the only tenant in the building. There are no onsite or off-street parking spaces for the parking site. However, there is longstanding city policy that grandfather's retail uses and other uses with a parking requirement of 3.3 spaces per 1,000 square feet or less into the city's commercial corridors. In addition, staff also analyzed the areas surrounding the project site and found an abundance of public accessible parking on-street at Glen Oaks Boulevard and nearby city parking facilities off East Angelino Avenue, as well as East Olive Avenue, respectively, to accommodate any influx in parking demand. Also, since the project site is within a half-mile of a major transit stop, involves a development project, and does not pose a threat to public health and safety, the city cannot enforce parking requirements per State Assembly Bill AB 2097. The project site is Zone C3, or general commercial business, and has a general plan designation of corridor commercial, which is a land designation intended to provide neighborhood serving uses. Adjacent to the project site are commercial buildings to the south, east, and west along Glen Oaks Boulevard, and multifamily residential to the north of the commercial corridor where R4 zoning and planned developments directly north of the project site. Guinea's proposed retail liquor establishment that will specialize in wine sales, but will also sell beer and distilled spirits. Guinea will also be offering samples, samplings of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumptions to those of age. The business proposes to operate every day from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Shown here are recent photos of the project site as seen from across Glen Oaks Boulevard looking north. This is the existing site plan. Again, the site is improved in an existing commercial building with no onsite parking. This is the image of Guinea's proposed floor plan. The applicant proposes to add interior improvements such as wall partitions, a restroom, glass-covered wine cellar, a storage, cashiers, counter, and shelving for incoming retail liquor establishment. As shown here, the area for product sampling is located in the southeastern corner of the retail space, occupying 0.84% of the total floor area of the store. Per conditions of approval proposed by staff, no alcohol samples can leave the designated sampling area and premises. Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1116 requires certain operational standards that have been included in the conditions of approval. On screen are some of those required standards that the business would be subject to in order to ensure compatibility with the surrounding uses. These include: The applicant shall post a sign at each exit advising patrons that no open alcoholic beverages may leave the premises. The sale of single beer bottles smaller than 40 ounces is prohibited. No samplings of alcoholic products are allowed to leave the designated sampling area, as noted in the plans. Excessive calls for police service relating to the use may be used as grounds for revocation of this conditional use permit. In addition, the employees who sell and serve samples of alcoholic beverage shall be required to complete a state-mandated training program in alcoholic beverage compliance, crime prevention techniques, and the handling of violence. The project qualifies for a categorical exemption under Section 15301 relating to existing facilities. There are no unusual circumstances that would preclude the use of this exemption. As part of staff's review of the conditional use permit, the project was reviewed for consistency with the Burbank 2035 General Plan, the applicable zoning regulations, and the required conditional use permit findings per BMC Section 10-1-1936, as detailed in the staff report and attached resolution. It is staff's assessment that the subject to the project's conditions of approval, the CUP request complies with all applicable requirements. Staff recommends that the planning commission find the project is exempt from CEQA, find that the project is consistent with the general plan, find the project satisfies the required findings for a CUP, and adopt a resolution of the planning commission approving project 22-0007085, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentations. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You'll have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation, or we may have an applicant calling in?
That's correct, Chair. I believe we have the applicant calling in. He's out of the country, but he's calling in to provide feedback during this period.
Is he going to stay on the phone? Or is he just going to...
I believe we're going to try to...
Yeah, I'm here for any...
Okay. Yes, he's going to answer the phone.
Sir?
I'd like to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we... Why don't you make your presentation and tell us about your project, and then maybe we'll ask you some questions, so that way we don't spend all of your money on long distance.
Okay. This is going to be a liquor store selling only and only Armenian products, wine, beer, and everything that... Every alcoholic product that's been produced in Armenia only. And mostly, we'll be concentrating on wine. And we're going to have a very small area only for tasting that will be done by the wholesalers, and when they have any new product, a new brand of wine, or brandy, or beer, or whatever product they have that they want to promote. And the tasting will be only small, small amount of whatever they want to promote. That's all. We're not going to sell that tasting like the wine stores that they're charging a small amount, and they're giving a glass or two of wine, or whatever. We're not going to do that.
Okay.
It will be done through the... By the wholesalers.
Got it. Right. Got it. Like a promotional thing, right?
That's correct.
Are you going to stay on the line, or do you have to go?
Chair, if I can ask?
Do you have any question? I'll be, I'll be here to answer.
This is for the speaker. If you can do us a favor and just mute yourself, but stay on the line, and then when the commission requests your feedback, the chair will prompt you so you can unmute yourself and then speak.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, so we will now open up the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter to address the planning board. The commission will give you a maximum time of three minutes. Members of the public may comment in person, present a completed speaker card to the planning board staff, or you can call 818-238-3335 to address the planning board. Callers may be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take the first few callers. If you could please take your phone off speaker when you deliver your message and your computer. Do we have any callers or cards?
We do not have any speakers or callers.
Okay. There being no other public comment, I will declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any other comments?
No additional comments, Chair.
And does the applicant wish to make any other comments? Does the board have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I have just a basic question for the applicant. I'm, I'm just curious how, how the concept came about in terms of having an Armenian wine and liquor store is, what, what's the story behind it? Just out of curiosity for the public.
Actually, Armenia just started to produce a very high quality of wine. It used to be controlled by the Soviet Union, and they are just allowing them to produce brandy. About after 91, they started producing wine, and because of their geographical position, they have, they have wineries like around maybe 2,000 meter higher than the sea level than they, they can produce the unique quality of product that, because of the, because of the elevation of their winery. And this, this make me believe that we can, we can sell a very high quality of wines in this, in Burbank, in our store. Plus, they have a very high quality of brandy since years, so that's amazing.
Thank you.
Great. Ms. Monica, you're good? Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the board's pleasure? All right, I'll entertain that motion.
Making a motion to approve project, project number 22-0007085, a request for a conditional use permit to allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption and onsite testing.
Is there another phrase about conditions of approval or anything? No?
No.
Just for the record, if you don't mind, if we can, if you are in tune to incorporate this friendly amendment, as noted in the resolution, that would be based on the findings of fact and subject to the project's conditions of approval?
Correct.
That was an affirmative from Commissioner Monica on his motion.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any more deliberation? Why don't we pull the motion as amended?
Chair Razadi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wick?
Yes.
And Commissioner Monica?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Have a great night.
Now is the time for reports from city staff. Do we have any reports?
No reports, Chair.
Okay. Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the planning board on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to speak in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. For members of the public that wish to speak by phone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the planning board. Callers will be placed in a queue, and all, after all in-person comments have been received, the phone lines are now open.
We have no speakers or callers.
We have no speakers or callers. Okay. I now declare the public comment period closed. Approval of minutes, we had a chance to review the minutes. If so, can we get a motion to?
I move to approve the minutes from February 12, 2024.
Okay.
I second that.
And we got a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. No one opposes. Introduction of new agenda items. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place it on a future agenda. Do we have anything to introduce? Seeing none, now is the time for city planner comments. Mr. Planner, comments?
Chair, thank you. This is Fred Ramirez, the city planner. I just wanted to let you know that the clerical, the city clerk is going through the process of receiving any applications for candidacy for the vacancy that was made as a result of Commissioner Elrich's resignation that we received about a month ago. So hopefully, there'll be additional support for you all, and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. So just wanted to keep you in the loop, so hopefully we'll have somebody to fill that fifth position in the commission, especially with the full docket that you'll be having starting, in particular, this summer, but all the way through the end of the year with the three specific plans that are pending.
Okay.
So, thank you.
We're ready. Rock and roll. We will now adjourn to the planning board meeting for Monday, April 8, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. This meeting will be held in person in the city chambers at 275 East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person or view the meeting online or on television. The public will be able to provide public comment in the following ways, always as in person, or by calling 818-238-3335, or leaving an e-comment on the city webpage at www.burbankca.gov/ecomments. Thank you all for your participation tonight.